All right, it is December twentieth, six forty-five P M. We are here at the unit office for school district number one eighty-six for the purposes of a special hearing for the tax levy. Nancy, will you call roll?
Yes. Mr. Beavers?
Here.
Dr. Corley?
Here.
Mr. McBride?
Here.
Mrs. Lane?
Here.
Mr. Cripps absent, Mr. Rungy?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
On the agenda is a tax levy review and I think Jane?
Yes. At the November board meeting, the board did set a preliminary tax levy as required and the administration determined that the district needed to levy seven point six million dollars, not including the bond and interest and which is four hundred and eighty-three, six hundred and seventy-two, and that's the amount of our bond and interest payments that the county clerk they, we don't actually levy that, the county clerk actually has those bonds, so total levy of a little over eight million dollars. This is county, our property taxes are local tax money, so we're thirty-four point seven-two percent. That is our share of our total budget, what we actually get in property tax money and that fluctuates a little bit from year to year, but that's, that's pretty true. So we're now, what is known that Mr. Brady, I think, mentioned that at the hearing earlier, general state aid dependent districts. So the majority of our money comes from general state aid based on our student enrollment, actually student attendance, not student enrollment, but we get some federal money, some other local money. But thirty-four point seven percent, which is kind of a low number. I've been talking and dealing with other districts throughout the state, some of those are ninety-five percent. You get ninety-five percent of their, of their budgets from property taxes. So we're at the opposite end of the spectrum, this is a different thing for us. One of the things that, I run on the board up here and I'm, I'm not a teacher, so I don't have through handwriting or necessarily presentation skills, but try to put some, some basic things. We talked about the tax levy, basically what we're asking the county clerk for, what, what the district needs for operations, what, what we're asking for our levy. What's extended, our extension is the amount that gets approved by the county clerk and that happens, I say after P T L, which P T L, property tax extension limitation law. I know it's a lot of words and a lot of, but basically tax caps, we're just gonna call that tax caps. There is a little magic formula that the county clerk, when, when we do the levy and say, okay, we're asking for this eight million dollars. The county clerk looks at a formula and what, what new property did you get in the district? And I, I looked at that today, a ten, twelve year history, and for us, it's been anywhere from a million dollars to six million something when Walmart was built in two thousand and eight. So fluctuates a lot, that new property, they look at five percent of your new property. They add what, what we extended last year, so what we got approved for last year and then we get the C P I percent of that. This is the C P I and that's the consumer price index, you probably heard a lot about, about that with economics and on the news, they talk about that. You know, how much things go up, rate of inflation, and that, that has fluctuated quite a bit over the, over the last ten years. But the average of ten years being one point seven percent, the average in the last five years of one and a half percent. Well, here we are, two thousand and fifteen, and that's what's going to get applied to our levy that we're doing right now. This two thousand and sixteen tax levy, that point seven percent, so they're gonna look, take that point seven percent, which is way below the average, and apply that to what we got last year, add that to five percent of our new property and, and then we're limited above and beyond that. So tax caps, these years where we have, you know, this four point one percent, we did a lot better on under tax caps, what, what we're being limited to increases year after year, and that's what the tax cap, tax caps talk about. They try to limit the, the property taxes that you're getting this year over, over last year. And of course, what, what we really want here is for our property values to go up, increase property values in, in Murphysboro and our school district, spread out this amount that we levy, the total dollar amount, spread it over more taxpayers, over more tax base, and you're paying less taxes, you're paying less per property. Now, some of the, some of the things that factor in what we're gonna ask for and talk about any changes is, did your property value go up? And of course, that has nothing to do with us, that, that's all about, I'm sorry to have to talk to you. That's all about, you know, the assessor's office and what they value your property at. So you may look at your tax bill, and we're probably about half, I would say, half of the, of your tax bill, the, the school district. Look at that tax bill and say, boy, my taxes really increased. But you have to look at, you know, several things, did your property value go up? What happened with the other taxing bodies, the park district and the county and the city and, you know, the library? What happened to those tax rates? And then the district is just a piece of that. I really don't know if any of them, the other taxi bodies hold tax hearings. We are required to do so if we, if what we're asking for this year, the levy, is more than five percent over what we extended, so what we got approved for by the county last year. And you wanna click the next one? One of the reasons that I always levy, ask for more than that five percent. This year, I actually asked for, I think it was ten, ten point six five percent, so if you saw in the paper, ten point six five percent more than what we actually got approved for last year. We're not gonna get that under tax caps, it's gonna get knocked way down. My levy's three, three point six five higher than it was last year. So we've levied, levied close to eight, eight point one million dollars. Under tax caps, the most we'll see is seven point six million. So you ask, well, why do you, why do you do that, why do you ask for more than you know you're going to get? You know, why do you have the hearing? This is the reason that I do the hearing. And this is all of our, this is fifteen, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, those tax years. Sixteen, all we know is what we're gonna ask for with the levy, so I don't have that up here. But this is, we know taxes levied for each year, which is what we asked for, taxes extended right next to it, what the county actually approved us for. Now, you can see that the one, the second stack is a lot less, because we're not getting what I asked for. But you see all the different colors, these are broken down by actual levies. And the first, the bottom one, you see four million. On the four millions, the last year we levied four point five million in the education fund, Purple's Education Fund. And it's a shorter stack because we started at four million on the graph, just so it's not such a crazy small graph for y'all to see. But, but that's the education fund, and that's our biggest levy, four point five million last year. I levy four point seven in that fund. But the reason that these are broken down like this, you have education fund, special ed, operations and maintenance, lease purchase, and then transportation, I M R F and social security, working cash, tort, fire prevention, which is, you probably all heard, talked about health, life, safety. And then the top one is bonds and interest. So the reason that those are broken down and the reason that that five percent is so important is under, under P T L, the property tax extension limitation law, the tax caps. Once we get that, the extension from the county clerk's office, and they tell us, this is how much you're gonna get. Last year, it, I think it was, they knocked it down eight, from seven point eight million to seven point two million. And when they give me that, I have the ability, as the district treasurer, to move that money around, but I'm limited by fund, by what I levy here. So my goal every year is to try to get as much in the education fund as I can, but I can't put more in there than I levy. So if I, if I know, you know, expenses are a lot higher in the education fund, I need, you know, we've had salary increases, you know, food costs are a lot higher, the education is fund is where the majority of our expenses happen. So I want everything to, everything I can to fall under there. The odds that there, it's five percent higher, I mean, it, it could be from year to year. But if I, if I'm limiting that, you know, I, I can kinda shoot myself in the foot. So I need to make sure that I've levied enough in every one of those funds, that if I have a, a jump in expenses, I can cover that. So it lets me, it lets me move money where, where is needed. I have three, what they call as-needed levies. And there are some districts that try to build those up, we don't do that. I have those spent down to next to nothing, and those are I M R F, which is our municipal retirement fund for our non-certified employees, social security and Medicare are both in that social security levy. We do, we do what's necessary, we don't wanna levy any more than we have to, we wanna put all the, all the tax money we can in our education fund, which is where all of our salaries are paid out of, all our primary expenses. But, but you can kinda see, as these funds fluctuate, last year I asked for five hundred and fifty thousand in that bright orange, that's my tort fund. Those are legal expenses, workman's comp, and property and liability insurance. And the reason I asked for five hundred and fifty thousand last year, but I only asked for three seventy-five in two thousand and thirteen, big jump in workman's comp, cost of our property and liability insurance, not so much, but workman's comp, and we had a significant increase in legal fees. So had I not covered that and had my, set my levy high enough and had this tax levy hearing, I could have tied my hands to not being able to put as much in, in that fund. We're still capped by the total amount, we're not gonna get more than that cap, but it's gonna enable us to have the flexibility to put the expenses where legal, legally required to by the school code within those funds. In that top, four hundred and eighty-three thousand, bond and interest, the current bonds that we have with the county clerk, and I believe those were paid off in two thousand and twenty-one. One of the things that you've heard talk about a lot recently is the county facility tax that will go into effect July first. We won't be, begin collecting any money till about a year from now, probably November, sometime in November of next year. But the, for us, the purpose of, of that county facility tax is to do away with that. So that top, we hope, that's gonna be gone, that, you've heard maybe talk about abatement a little bit. That top amount will be abated with that, once that county facility tax starts rolling in and then we won't be, we won't be going to the taxpayers for bond and interest for facilities at all anymore. So that's something that would be nice to kinda see knocked off the stack for all of us. So that's kinda why that, that five percent, why we do that, because it'd be a lot easier just to say, okay, other districts set that increase above what they received last year. Their extension at four point nine-nine percent of what they're levying this year, what they're asking for, so they don't have to have a hearing. I just assume, be transparent, have the hearing, talk about it. We did publish it in the paper, some of you might have seen it there. We also published it, posted on our district website, some of you may have seen that there. So we did comply with the Truth in Taxation Act on that. I talk, talk a lot, but I wanna make sure I cover, cover my points here, I'm sorry. So we've talked about in, in prior years and, and a lot of you probably heard discussion about this, maybe from board members or other community members, that it's, it's not in our best interests to, what we say, leave any money on the table. You know, we have, we have the capability to set our tax levy, and I've had the question, well, you know, some of the other taxing bodies, we're, we're either decreasing our levy or, or remaining stable, we're not increasing at all. But under, school districts are the only ones that fall under the P T L law, the tax cap law. And what happens there is if we, if we say, as a district, we're not, we're not going to increase the levy, we're not going to take advantage of that increase in new property. If we don't access that, when we first have the ability to do that, we don't have access to it later. So it falls off the table, so that, that revenue is gone, not just this year, but moving forward forever. We can't ask for that again. And in addition, our general state aid, it is based on, there's a certain amount per student that we're, that we're supposed to be guaranteed by the state board of education, and that is, is it sixty-three eleven? Sixty-nine eleven?
Sixty-one eleven.
Can I just say? I don't think that's right, but it's something about it. And, and I, and we don't remember, because they, they don't give us in, in any year what, what we're guaranteed to. So it, we got prorated so many years that, that amount, that guaranteed amount kind of escapes me right now. But there's a certain amount per student that says, every student in Illinois is guaranteed to get this amount of money. Let's just say it's sixty-nine hundred dollars per student. But they also take into effect your property taxes, so for us, that thirty-five percent, our property taxes, that gets, that's get, gets backed out of that equation, and then that's how our general state aid is determined. If we don't take advantage of available increases in our property taxes, the state board looks at that and says, well, you didn't need that, you don't need that money for your local efforts, so we're gonna, we're gonna keep part of your general state aid. So if we do that, we're not only losing general state aid, we're losing property taxes this year and down the road. And, and that's money for our students. I mean, so for us, us being so dependent on property taxes and general state aid in the state of Illinois budget and so many uncertainties, it's just not really something that we can afford to do, is lose that revenue. It's getting tough enough for us to, to make ends meet and to provide the education, you know, keep the class sizes to a, a reasonable amount and do what we're continuing to do. And, and you all know it's an uphill battle. This year is probably a harder year than we've had. Even though that you've heard, we're fully funded this year, we got all of our general state aid, no proration. That may be true, we've gotten all of our payments so far through the first payment in December, but we're not, general state aid payments, what we're not getting are what they call mandated categoricals, transportation, special ed. And just those two things together, if we get, we're supposed to get those in quarterly payments, so we haven't received anything this year for fiscal year seventeen or the last payment of last, last fiscal year that we should have gotten in June. If we go four, if we go four quarters and don't receive those special ed, transportation and a few other payments, that's about a million and a half dollars, which is more than we received in a general state aid proration or cut. Because when they say proration, we're not getting it back. It's not, what it was, a four and a half million dollars over five years, they, they prorated our general state aid. We're not ever getting it back, it's gone, it's, it's gone forever. The, these mandated categoricals, and these are payments that we receive for, you know, we're mandated to do special ed, we're mandated to do transportation, and so these are the payments that we receive in reimbursement for what we did last year, and we're not getting that. So that's in effect, a proration, a cut, you know, there's no guarantee. We have a budget, K twelve, education has a budget this year, no one else has a budget passed December thirty-first. So, you know, it's, it's, it's everybody's guess whether we're gonna get the, the rest of our general state aid this year. But that's, that's why it's critical to, to levy to our max, so we aren't losing other resources as well. I talked a lot, Jane.
I have a couple points on me. So I, I think most people, like you talked about, there's a percentage that came out in that notice, the ten point, whatever it was. But I think I just wanna hit the, the main point, that that is a levy versus extension.
Right.
That's not comparing the apples and apples.
Right.
Do you know the amount of levy versus levy? What percentage that has been?
Three point six five.
Okay, every year, that's pretty, been pretty.
Well, it, it varies a little bit, sometimes it's less than that, but this year the increase that I asked for over last year was three point six five. And that's just, and I don't know why the law is that it is that we, you know, we're not talking about extension to extension or levy to levy. It's what we, what we actually were awarded basically by the county clerk last year and based on what we're levying, what we're asking for this year. So that's, that's just the required percentage, and that's what we have to report on for Truth in Taxation.
And then, before I forget, I know there's a lot of students here, and I'm sure all this information is quite overwhelming, but I think there's copies of some information up here, so if you wanna get it, take it.
I have a tax levy, tax levy review, so if you have to do notes or a paper, it might help a little bit.
I might help you, thanks. Any questions from comments?
And then, now, and then Jane and Chris says, when you levy the eight million, that's the full amount we need. And if you don't levy that full amount, that's where they take away from our general state aid.
Well, we're asking for, we're asking for the, the full eight million.
Right, because that's what we.
Under tax caps, we won't get more than seven point six.
Right, but I mean, we have, we ask for that amount so that they don't take it from, we ask for it on this hand, so they don't take it away.
But if, if we say, we're only gonna levy what we received last year, so we received seven point two. That's all we're gonna levy is seven point two. And we don't take advantage of our new property growth in the district, and we don't take advantage of the increase in C P I, then that's where they ding us and say.
State will penalize us very much.
And, and say it amounts to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we won't get that in property taxes, and we'll turn around and not also get it in state aid, so it could cost us twice as much. That doesn't sound fair, but that's, that's the way it is. That's, that's a calculation for tax caps.
This is, well, you gotta be careful with that, because funding reform is about changing the equation, like how you calculate your general state aid. The real issue that Illinois is dealing with is, is that property tax is the main pillar for funding education. They look at property taxes as the, the, the guide to which they do all their calculations from. So like the funding reform that Menard's did, or the funding reform that they're talking about with the evidence base, those are still with property taxes as the main pillar. The, the, so I mean, a lot of states don't use property taxes as the pillar, it's, it's, it's a regressive way to do it. It really, property tax extension limitation laws has a lot of unintended consequences where you have to maximize your property taxes, otherwise you get your general state aid penalized. So it's a, it's a broken system. But, but, but when we talk about the funding reform, we're talking about changing the equation, but it's still not gonna fix
Yes.
a lot of the inequities, because property taxes just should not be the fun, in my opinion, the fundamental pillar for education funding. It should be balanced between investment, property.
Jane, is there an easy and simple way to explain abatement, which we can look at, once this money starts rolling in from sales tax?
An easy and simple way for abatement? Well, one, once, it, it will be next year's levy, the two thousand and seventeen levy, where we have the ability to look at what our bond payments are and, and then plan to abate that amount. And abatement is just that, the taxpayers aren't gonna pay that amount, and that's what.
But if I understand it, this is where hindsight's twenty-twenty, next year, the extension will be very much like this extension, and we'll have a resolution that goes with this high extension that says, but we're putting this money toward it. So we still have to extend as if we're not abating, but then we do a resolution on top of it that, that then says, but we're not doing this. Because again, we don't want to get dinged by the state for.
For levy.
For levy.
So, so that amount there won't go out in property tax bills, it won't be, it won't be included.
You'll have to levy, you'll have to levy for it, but it won't be, it won't, as part of the extension, you'll be paying, you'll be abating part of the extension.
Any other questions from board? All right, now we're gonna move to, time for recognition of the audience, I'm sure there's a few people who would like to speak, and we will, everybody will have a chance to do so. So we're gonna start with Judge, do I call you Judge Watt then? Judge Watt? You got here first, so thank you for please coming.
For her life. Thank God. My name's David Watt, I've been a resident of Murphysboro for forty-eight years. Made a lot of purchases in Murphysboro in forty-eight years, everyone that had sales tax on it, I paid it. I paid property tax for forty-six years. I could always count on one eighty-six to compromise more than fifty percent of my tax bill. Six weeks ago, we had an election. There was a question on the ballot about our new one percent tax. Now, your superintendent was in the newspaper, he was on television, and you would have thought that this was the solution for schools. I'd like to know how much you expect in the next year to get from this one percent tax. Anybody know? Next year, one point six million?
Starting in November.
Okay.
From November to November.
Now, right after this is passed, you all decide you wanna have a extension, which is double plus the tax cap. And I just don't understand it. I know you have a teacher that you're gonna have to pay four or five years back salary to. And folks, let me tell you, I read the appellate court opinion. And I don't know who your legal counsel was, but you better make sure that they have a license to practice in the state of Illinois, because you got some really bad advice. And what really disturbed me in that opinion was that your superintendent was talking with kids in the geometry class to try and get information and evidence regarding the time that lesson plans were delivered, whether they were delivered, who delivered them. Your superintendent is here for the children, the children are not here for the superintendent. I'm wondering if any parent was asked ahead of time whether or not their child was gonna be interrogated. And besides that, whatever he gets out of the kids is hearsay. Hearsay is when one person says that somebody else said or did something, and that somebody else is not present to admit or deny it. And I think it's probably very fortunate that this did not happen when I had a child in school and it was one of the children who was interrogated, because we would have had a big time problem. I don't know who talked the people into getting rid of this teacher. And you had an independent hearing officer, you didn't like that decision. Went to the trial court, you didn't like that, you go to the appellate court, you didn't like that, did you go any further? Did you go to the Supreme Court? Huh? Yeah. Somebody really lined their pockets, well, no wonder your legal expenses were up there. You people need to realize that hearing officers are there for a purpose. They are there to be an independent arbiter. And you just kept fighting windmills, just kept fighting windmills. Now, you had a gym roof fall in. Do you have insurance on that gym?
Auditorium.
Auditorium.
Auditorium?
Yeah.
You also had a builder, you had an engineer, and you had an air conditioning company, and they all had insurance. Seems to me like you're trying to put this rebuilding that you're going to do, and an extension perhaps, on the taxpayers. And that's not why you're here. You're not here, you're acting like a vacuum cleaner and the taxpayers earn A T M. It's not right, it is not right. There's no reason in the world to extend this ten point four, whatever it is. You're just playing games, you're just playing games. There's an old saying, you feed pigs and you slaughter hogs. With what you are doing, you've gone a step beyond, you've gone to greed, and I think every one of you should be ashamed of it.
Thank you, Judge. Anybody else who wishes to address the board? Yes, me.
My name's Dan Box.
Thank you.
I'm business owner, I'm also on the county board, this came from county board. I have a visitor from Ukraine, she's with the government class, so she was at the other meeting, we brought her out here. I contacted Jan, and you shared with me, I asked for you, you shared with me the E A V from two thousand and two. I contacted Jan, and you shared with me, I asked for you, you shared with me the EAV from two thousand two back. And then I contacted Michelle Tweedy, who's our county board coordinator, and had her give the EAV for the county as a whole. You shared it just for the school district, what you're, you know, the taxing and the change, and then the money you're gonna get. I wanna pass it around to everybody. Just pass this. I'm gonna keep one myself. I'll pass it around, then I'll give the rest to the, to the audience. And I just wanna go, starting back in two thousand two up to twenty sixteen now. The CAV, you know, we, we, we have to have the tax basis that's vital. I mean, you know, it's vital for all, it's not just vital for the, the public entities. Uh, it's our local economy, and if, if it's healthy, you know, these monies are gonna flow in, you're gonna have investment here, the tax base will grow each year. You probably wouldn't even, if the tax base was growing like, you know, like it, like it should, like you'd like things to happen, there probably wouldn't even be need, need for a sales tax, I'm assuming. So I'm not gonna talk about your budget right now. I, I could get into your budget, I could get into the county budget. I wanna talk about just the tax base. So you got any of those extra, 'cause I want some people from the audience to have this. Last one, okay, I got some more right here. I'm gonna take my copy and you pass it over to them, okay? Give me, give me that last page here, thanks. All right. Well, as you see, I mean, the tax base we're dealing with, it's taxing the, uh, school district to get the money for the, the schools, this is much more tax base, just for the whole school district. And then the larger, the next page is the county as a whole. And you can see in two thousand two, it started at a certain level, and then it grew, two thousand three, two thousand four, tapered off in like two thousand eight. Talked about how that was a hit, and we're not back to those figures again until just now, as far as the, uh, the new growth, especially for the, um, the school district. And I wanna, I wanna talk to you about that. I mean, that, that, that issue there, uh, you know, right now, the county, and if you turn, if you turn to the third page, you're gonna see a, a li- list that has DTR in front of it, and that's delinquent properties. So what happens is when people, when people don't pay their tax bills, you know, two or three years, they get, the properties get abandoned, and then the county gets a hold of it, and they run through an agent, so it can go up, to get back on the tax roll for like six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And there's people that buy that. They may pay more than that. There's a bidding process, and they wanna get it back on the tax roll. So property goes up, and, and, and it sells, and it gets either tore down, maybe somebody has a lot, or maybe somebody wants to redo a house. But there's a list of those that happen every year, okay? And what, what you, what's not, what I'd like to see going forward is, if you, if you flip the page even more farther into the, like, the fifth page, you'll see who bought those properties. And that's all public knowledge. You can, you can see it, Murphysboro there, that San Riz, Elg- El- El- Elville, Carbondale. But Murphysboro, you can see right there, who bought the properties, what they paid for them. They start at six thirty-eight, so they bid on, maybe there are properties that people wanna tear down, maybe there's some next to it, maybe somebody wants to redo a house. But what I'd like to see, going back since two thousand two, is how many of those properties are being offered up each year? What's going on? Why are these people abandoning properties? And then how many of those properties that are getting offered up, and I'm talking to the treasurer about this, I asked her tonight, that don't get even, they don't get purchased, they're just still sitting there, nobody's even buying them, and why isn't anybody buying them at a rock bottom sale? I mean, my God, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars, I could buy that lot, you know, I could fix it up, I could turn it around. You know, that's investment, the residential investment, commercial investment, even the city's buying some to, to not have it hurt anybody else's profit. So this is a real issue. Uh, last year, uh, we had a lady from Carbondale who was very upset because of a piece of property that had been abandoned. It was probably, that's a property that nobody wants anymore. It went for six thirty-eight, and nobody wants to buy it. The city of Carbondale has been taking care, care of it, mowing it. But the tree limbs have been falling on her car, on her property, she pays taxes. She was very upset. She was like, what, who's gonna take care of this? Nobody's taking care of this property. Well, you buy it. Well, she didn't wanna buy it. It was not in her budget to buy it. So same thing happened in Murphysboro. So the county said, look, we, we gotta do something about this, because these abandoned properties shouldn't be affecting these properties that people are paying taxes on, and we need to address this, so we're gonna, they're gonna try to take part of those funds that they sell of those properties, and use it to clean them up, to clean them up, so it doesn't affect these other properties that are taxed or being paid on. Okay, that's a good thing. And they did an intergovernmental agreement that we're reaching out to get that done. It's a good thing, it's a good thing. But the question I have is, why are there so many properties going up for sale? Why? Why? And you know, budget is a, budgets are, are a problem. Yes, you have to tax on, on the growth, okay, we know that. And, and how money is spent, you know, that's why you're on the board, and people let you to the board, so we know that. Same thing with the county. But the other thing is, is, you know, the state of Illinois, we got state of Illinois, national economy, whatever, but we still are here in Jackson County, and it is a, a local economy that we're dealing with. Now, I hear people all the time complaining. They gotta, they, they go to appeals, they get their, they get their ta- they get their assessed valuation, and it's like, whoa, what, what is this value I've got on my house? And where did that come from? So they go, and they have to go to supervisor assessments, and they, they say, well, I, I don't agree with that value, I can't sell it for that. And then they get a runaround there. This is happening on a regular basis. You saw me, I don't know if you noticed, there's another number I wanna show you, is the number of appeals each year that people go to the, to the border review, and then they take it to the state and find it. And this whole process of like, hey, what, what, what's the value? Why are you doing this? It's not a matter of me, you know, I'm paying my taxes on that rate, but your value, it's, it's off. Now, this is not happening at a, at a small amount, this is happening in a big amount. And obviously, it is causing these other things to take place, because if you have a hundred thousand dollar home, and the next year, you know, for some reason, you get an assessed valuation of a hundred and seventy-five, it's not just the compounding of the new taxes they're putting on it from all the different tax bodies. You just raised the value of my home to seventy-five thousand, my business, like, you are inflating the value on top of it. Now, that's not you, that's a detriment.
Dan, Dan, I, I really, I don't wanna get you sort of anything, but can we?
I'm gonna wrap it up for you real quick here.
Thank you, that would be great. I appreciate that.
We need to find out what is going on there, because that is not good. If things were really, really, really good in Jackson County and Murphysboro, when these, first of all, there wouldn't be that many of these properties coming up. And if they did, they would be being bought, and they'd be fixed up, and then your tax base would not be a problem, it would be growing. Something strange, so I'm just gonna wrap it up real quick. Unless I tell you something else. Boss Truck Service has a state certified scale. It can only be variance of ten pounds. Okay, we weigh hogs and cattle and grain and rock, it comes across, it's gotta be ten pounds off, okay? The state gives us permit each year. They come in, they check the scale, it's gotta be right, if it's not right, they shut it down. We gotta get it fixed. It's important. What if Boss Trucking started, well, you know, I'm just gonna jack up these weights of about, oh, about three hundred pounds more than what they really are. I started doing that, okay? I think we get, I get a reputation, and people stop doing business for Boss Truck Service. Now, that's something we need to look at. I'm not gonna talk about the budget, I don't know how you're spending the money. I want you guys to focus on that though, because that's a reality. It's going on in this county, and it's a serious problem, and it's being a detriment to our, for, to our, to our budgets too, our public budgets. It really is. So that's all I can share.
Thank you.
All right.
Uh, anybody else? We have more. Yes, I hate to say this, but if you wouldn't mind coming forward so we can, uh, hear your voice through the through the microphone though, if you could come all the way to the front, 'cause we have a microphone up here.
Oh, okay.
And then just state your name and.
Yeah, my name is Gloria Campos, and I'm, I represent, like many of you. Um, I understand the need of the Murphysboro School District. Her children, grandchildren, my children are grown up on, thank God. And we want the best for them and for you, the educators, because you are, you are the second home, on some prime, primary home for many of you. My question to you is, we are a small community. We just have as a county a tax increase of one percent going toward, people doesn't know if it's to fix the building or so, it's to education, it's the whole picture. And now, this other one comes that is gonna affect the Murphysboro, a small community. This is gonna affect many people's budget. And like Dan Boss say, look what happened with the, with the property, with the state property in Jackson County. And it's not just in Jackson County, it's in Illinois. We do have a problem. And I understand that this year we were fully funded. We don't know what's gonna happen next year. But I think the timing, the timing to do this is the wrong one. We need to fix many, many things, and, and, and I'm working to see, I'm a coun- a council member. And believe me, we work really hard bal- balancing that budget, coming to the minimum, not to increase taxes or the levy of people. We are accountable for that, and that's our duty and our obligation. But the timing of this increase for the Murphysboro School District after as a county, we just passed a one percent sorry guys, is the wrong one. So I will beg you to reconsider this, because it's a bad reflection of our rec- school district, and the people will wanna start questioning, what's going on with the increase that you got, you just got, what's going on with the money? Thank you so much for your.
Thank you, Ms. Campos. Anybody else from the community who would like to address the board?
I got one more thing to say. Um, I'm coming to you as, my name is Mike Lang.
Thank you, Mike.
Coming here to you as John Q, taxpayer's got a lot of property in Murphysboro, et cetera. You know, I feel, um, I feel like it's really, um, a little shady. You know, I wasn't told, I helped push that one percent sales tax, because I see our facilities. And I go to Carterville, and I go to Marion, and, and, uh, Williamson County Schools, and I see what they got with what they did ten years ago, when they did the one percent sales tax. And our facilities need some, some help, and I supported it. It was supported underneath the premise that we said that we were gonna abate some property taxes with that money and be able to do that. Now, um, why was this just, my first question is, why was this just communicated now? And it was to pigtail on Ms. Campos and, and Mr. Boss. Uh, there was no mention whatsoever when we were pushing for this one percent sales tax, when you were in the gym with the sign, et cetera, that now in two months, we're gonna be, uh, asking for a levy of more taxes on your property taxes. Why was this just communicated till now?
We do this levy every year, Mike.
Well.
At the same time every year.
Every year.
Right.
The same time.
Same time every year.
You can't abate what you don't have yet. We, we won't receive any taxes till next November.
You won't even start paying the sales tax until July first of two thousand seventeen.
Of two thousand, okay.
Right.
Yeah.
But couldn't you as a board, instead of the smoking mirrors, saying you want ten point whatever percent, and say, we're not gonna, we don't request an increase? We've just increased the community by one percent on everything that's bought.
So you want us to take a double hit from the state for about five hundred grand?
If we don't, if we don't levy that amount and cover any new growth that's occurred in the last year in Jackson County, number one, we can't ever recoup that down the road, and the state will dock us on our general state aid that amount again, so that, you know, they're gonna get us squatted.
But won't that valuation be a same valuation then down the road?
But you can't claim it, you have to claim it when it comes on the road.
Because there, there are districts like Carbondale that, um, are levying four point nine percent, because they're not having a tax hearing. Now, they are a, um, property tax district. Carbondale is, they get a majority of their funds through the property taxes, and they are a general state aid dependent district. So they run the risk of possibly losing some of their general state aid, but again, that's the smaller per- percentage of their total budget. On the other hand, they're also, I, I, I get the transparency thing, but by doing only four point nine percent, they don't have the flexibility either to move it between the different funds, which is something that we need to have, because, um, just because we're not, we don't have the revenues there. So it, it, I mean, there's a lot of reasons to do this, so that the, from the school funding side, it works. And the timing, I, I get what you're saying. I think what Mr. Boss said about the, the timing, just absolutely wrong, because it sends the wrong message to the community members. You're absolutely right. I, I, I get that, and, um, we do this every year. We do the ten percent, the extension is the same every year, so.
We're, we're not gonna, you're not gonna pay ten percent more.
So, and I get that, but the bottom line is, when you increase, and you increase, and you increase, I mean, there's, I'm not getting more rents out there. You know, the, the monies that people are making in this community is staying about the same. So I'm not increasing my rent five hundred dollars a month, uh, to six hundred dollars a month. And yet, I'm still paying more taxes, and still have to keep up the houses, et cetera. So when you say you're gonna collect this more money, and you can be able to move it from fund to fund, well, uh, we've got some toward issues. We're gonna have issues with, uh, all kinds of things that are gonna be taken away from that fund and not going into the education fund, and therefore, now you're gonna really affect students. That's my issue, 'cause we should be here for the kids. Okay, that is my whole entire thing. We are here for the kids, and so, uh, taking money from the community on taxing, and then having to move it to other funds in which is not going into the education, really sucks.
What I said was, that I spend a lot of time maximizing the education fund, that I, that I spend the other funds down, the hasn't needed levies to, to nothing, to make sure that the most money goes into the education fund, because we do have an increase in salaries every single year.
Well, not every year, no.
Yes, we do.
Well, you're talking the steps.
That means more money out the door.
More money out the door.
That's money out the door, but that's not even keeping with the cost of living. My problem is, is that when you tax and tax and tax, and it doesn't go into the education fund, and it goes into other funds, um, it just kinda leaves away, and we've got a lot of issues. I just know you're trying to do the best you can, but, you know, we all have to pay the taxes, and we all have to pay, uh, pay the piper. And so, I just felt a little bit deceived with this timing of it. Uh, if that would've been in there, I wouldn't have probably pushed so hard, because I know that they were gonna come in there and tax us again on it, so.
Thank you, Mike. One thing, and I, I don't think it's new to any of us, we, we heard a few teachers talk about it being shady, and we were withholding information. This tax cycle, I don't think there's any way to avoid the timing of our levy and extension, because of, when taxes are extended, we have to get it requested. So there was no, I don't know of any other alternative to the timing of it. Uh, so I guess, I just kinda wanted to address, the timing is poor, yeah? I don't think there was anything else we could've done about that. I do understand it's, it's not a, a great situation to be in. I don't think there was any other way for us to do it.
Right, if we, if we would've abated on this levy, the bond and interest payment, if we abate that, the money has to come from somewhere. And it's not, we don't have the, the facility tax revenue until next November. So that money's gonna come from money that we use for salaries.
Okay.
And to pay utilities and to pay.
Okay, let me, let me kinda move forward with this, and then, Mike, I'll give you thirty seconds.
But couldn't you, couldn't you have abated it, and then just kept the levy the same way and not raised and asked for rates?
You can't, you can't abate what you don't have though.
We don't have it yet.
That's like you can't buy a third home.
Yeah, we won't receive it until November, and that's only three months.
I know, but couldn't you have just asked for what you would've got from the county clerks when you did it last year? Couldn't you ask for the same amount?
Okay, and say, if we do that, say there is a million dollars worth of property that's been built this year in Jackson County, and we don't levy for that, we can never levy for that in the future, and they will come in and dock us on our general state aid the same amount that we did not levy on those properties.
I got, I got one question on that. Please help me out here. Um, the new growth that, from twenty fourteen to twenty fifteen is, uh, am I right, it's like two million, two million? What is the new growth for the district? About two, 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 three million?
I, I think it, um, in the calculation, I never know exactly, because it's, uh, it looks like it's two, you know, two, two and a half million. But when you look at our, um, the extension that we get from the county clerk, it might only say one point five million.
Okay, but the tax, now the taxes levy is not on, the taxes levy is on the total EAV, not, so that's, but your, so your, your new increases, your, your new monies, which tax extended, uh, in twenty fourteen were seven million, now that's two thirty-two, so your new money is only about how much that you're generating, the new money over last year?
And it's, and it's not necessarily new, all new property, some of that is increased in valuation, so that's why it's two, it's, you know.
Okay, but of new, of a new levy, we know there's new valuation, but of new levy from this year going into this one that you're gonna tax for, what is the new increase?
New property?
No, new taxes. What are the new tax increases?
We don't know, because we don't know.
Give me an estimate. What are you estimating it gonna be?
We don't know what the EAV will be. There's no way to know that.
All right, you know, but you knew what it was, you knew what it was last year, and so you know that you got that, that much going backwards, you went from twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen.
It was, yeah.
And so you got that much more, you know, this time, you don't know what it is, so you're going to levy the amount. So what you're saying is, is even if we had a healthy tax base growth, okay? And we really maximize it, would you still, even though we had, uh, max, re- I mean, really good growth, let's say it tripled from this year to, to the next, would you still maximize to the full extent, or could you back it off a little bit?
Under property tax extension limitation law, if you don't maximize it, you lose your general state aid.
Okay.
And so, it's, it's really, it's an unintended consequence of that law. And so, for, and it was created because in the districts that were growing so much, like around the collar counties of Chicago, And so, and it was created because in the districts that were growing so much, like around the collar counties of Chicago, that's where tax caps started. And it's because the growth of the houses were so much, they only get about four hundred dollars in, in, they're, they're, they're flat capped.
So, so the, so the sales tax then, after you levy to the full extent, you're gonna take half of the, of the sales tax that is collected and that is gonna be, be the abatement off of, of, of it, it's half of it, right?
It's, um.
You said half of the sales tax income.
Okay.
Yeah, well, and we'll. And any future jobs that need other new facilities will not be put on property taxes.
I, I understand, but here's, here's a, here's a fact that.
Dan, I'll give you thirty seconds, okay, because there's more people that want to speak.
No problem.
Go.
Did you not like me?
I do like you, I just wish there.
This is the first time I've been here.
There are just other people.
So, uh, you know, the tax rate per, on a hundred thousand dollar home is about three to three and a half percent. Do you know there's places in, in, in the state of Illinois that is closer to two percent? And you know that a three, three and a half percent tax amount on a hundred thousand dollar home is a natural economic burden to economic growth. So I just hope going in the future, that all these taxing bodies, along with the, with the, the private sector, the two chambers, starts working together to start help promote the boat, the, the base, so we can get the sales tax from three percent down to two percent and start working in that direction because that will help growth.
Mr. Boss, I'm with you one hundred percent on that because I'm, I'll tell you this, Arlington Heights, which is a power county, they are, um, they have a huge EAV, growing incredibly and their, their school tax rate's around one point two five percent.
Wow.
East, so, East St. Louis, which is not, is nine percent. The problem is, is the schools don't control that, they have to follow the rules of the, the property tax extension limitation laws. And it's set up, it's wrong.
Well, I think, I think if we were at a local level though, we could do things to help promote that and it, and, and, and I think we could do that.
Love to work with you.
But the, but, but the bottom line here is, um, under the general state aid funding formula, they take into account local efforts, so property taxes, um, and they subtract that out of what we get per student. So if we don't levy to the full capacity, we said we're losing property taxes and we're losing general state aid. So if I'm, if we're getting sixty-nine hundred dollars per student for every one of these kids and, but we say, we're not gonna levy the full amount of property taxes, we know we're gonna lose general state aid because our kids don't need or deserve that much, because, and I'm not saying you're saying that, but if you go to suburban areas of the state, they, they get property taxes that they're spending twelve thousand, fifteen thousand per student on their kids.
Who cares about that?
Our kids.
Who cares about that? We're here in Jackson County.
Okay.
Let's take care of Jackson County.
I think Jackson County could become a high priority and something.
But we're trying to take care of our students, that's, I mean, that's our job to take care of.
We don't want to lose state money by not levying our, our full capacity. If we don't levy our full capacity, then they take away our state money too.
And, and that's understandable, but I, I think that there needs to be a balance there because obviously, there is this obstacle that, it's not the only obstacle, there's some growth that's gonna happen in Murphy's Row, we know that. But we gotta do things to, that sets a planning horizon that goes, hey, look, three years, five years, this is what we're working for and we're gonna promote private sector growth and we can get there and then you won't be so dependent on state aid. And that's what we should shoot for because that's a good thing.
Well, the problem with some of the growth is, and I'm not saying it's wrong, but we give the enterprise zone to new businesses so we don't collect any taxes for them for five years, fifty percent for the following five. It's a good thing to get business in, but it takes time for them to, to, for that to get on. But if we don't capitalize on their, the first time they're on the tax rolls, then we can't ever capitalize on that.
Hope you keep your minds open to a residential type of, uh, development, like we're doing in Cincinnati where these dilapidated properties, somebody buys it, fixes it up. There's a break there of some sort, not an enterprise zone, but it's for residential. A lot of activity happening in Cincinnati helps these, these, these turn these neighborhoods around and then your tax base become healthy. So just keep your mind open, that's all I wanna do. I mean, I'm from here, I'm a red devil, you know? But just, we're trying to get more of just red devils here.
Anybody else? Any other, uh, community members with additional comments? Yes?
I have one.
If you wouldn't mind, I'm sorry, coming forward so we have a microphone so we can hear you better, if you step forward.
I can actually talk pretty loud.
Now, I, I really, I don't think.
She's not picking any up.
Yeah, she's not.
So I agree with what Mr. Lane said and Mr. Boss, sorry.
Could you state your name too please?
Oh, I'm Emily Burke.
Thank you.
Uh, actually, I serve on the Jackson County Board, but I'm also a resident here in Murphy's Row. And I agree with what's already been said, so I don't need to restate that, but a point that I wanna make is that, I know you do this every year, but this year, can you see that it's painful and the reason that you're having this hearing is because you've exceeded your maximum request and requires a public hearing? And so these people have come to tell you that it hurts. So, you know, they're not here to like argue with you or not appreciate what you're doing, but the reason you have the hearing is so that you can hear from the people, how it affects them, what their perception is of it going forward. So I appreciate your time and the things that you've done. And the gentleman makes a great point that, you know, it's not time to compare us to suburbs where they have a booming economy. You, you don't wanna drive people out of Jackson County by doing this and you don't wanna make the perception that people can't afford to live here. And I do want you to know that that is a perception that's happening right now, whether it's true or not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew, yes, Ms. Campos? Couple minutes, thanks.
It will, it will be. I understand what Mr. McBride said about if we don't maximize our levy, we will lose money. But what about keeping it what it is? I know it is a chance and it might be a risk for the, for the, for the education, for the schools. But at least I'm going back, the timing is the wrong one. Right now, this year, two thousand and sixteen, maybe two thousand seventeen might be better. This year is not the good one. And hopefully, things will go better, but how about staying? And I know that I'm asking you to tighten the belt a little bit more. Maybe a miracle will happen, I don't know, you know, I want, I want a new car, believe me, but I can't afford it, so I'm not buying it. So that, that, that's my point, you know? I know that we want new infrastructure, have the maximum amount on the levy, we cannot afford it. As a citizen, we cannot afford more taxes in Jackson County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tell that to the county board too.
All right. Anybody else?
Oh, did you say something about the county board? County board, they did cut, they tapered it off, they started this year and it's gotta go that way.
State don't take, but the state don't take money away from you.
I, I agree, we know that.
You're not, you're not.
I know that, I, I, I told you I know that, I told you you came here to talk about assessments.
Okay. I don't think, are there any other comments? Concerned questions?
I'm leaving too.
Okay. Having gone through that, I will take a motion for adjournment.
Just a second.
All those in favor?
All right.
All right, let's take a five minute.